Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, March 6th, 2024. Could we have roll call, please?
Campbell.
President.
Morgan.
Aye.
Nortoff. Path.
Here.
Pasak.
Aye.
Ware. Here. Sula.
Present. We do have a quorum. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from our meeting that was held back on February 21st. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, a motion to approve, to submit, would be in order.
So moved. Second?
I didn't catch who was...oh, motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Path. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a request by Mueller Realty 3 LLC, Mueller Honda, located at 7,000 Grand Avenue. Tracy?
Yep. Mueller Realty 3 LLC is seeking the following: One, a special use permit to allow the operation of a vehicle dealership with outdoor storage and display; and two, relief from certain C2 design standards found in Article 5.4 of the zoning ordinance. The subject property is located at 7,000 Grand Avenue, which is the northeast corner of Grand Avenue and Brookside Drive. The property consists of approximately 7.4 acres and was annexed into the village in 1996 and granted CB2, Community Commercial Zoning. Vehicle dealerships required a special use permit in the CB2 district. However, an annexation agreement was approved for this property, which set forth specific development standards and established a vehicle dealership as a permitted use. The annexation agreement expired in 2016, as annexation agreements have term limits of 20 years, resulting in the dealership becoming a legal non-conforming use. The dealership is allowed to continue to operate as a legal non-conforming use as long as it complies with the regulations of the non-conforming provisions of the zoning ordinance. One of the provisions of this article is that non-conforming uses cannot expand. The petitioner's plans are the product of corporate Honda's national rebranding. As part of updating the building to conform to Honda's new branding design, the owner is combining the two existing dealership buildings into one. The result is that the amount of building area increases by about 10,000 square feet, from 32,000 square feet to slightly over 42,000 square feet. This increase in building area violates the provision that restricts non-conforming uses from expanding. Therefore, the owner is seeking a special use permit to allow a vehicle dealership with outdoor storage and display on the site. Granting of this special use permit will eliminate the legal non-conforming status for the dealership. The second request is for relief from C2 design standards. The owner is seeking relief from certain design standards that are established in the zoning ordinance for commercial buildings and sites. The planning commission is authorized to approve a modification, reduction, or waiver of any of the design standards if the board finds that, in the particular case, the particular nature of the use, the exceptional shape or size of the property and/or building, or other exceptional situation or condition would justify such action. Many of the design standards that the applicant is requesting relief from are a result of Honda's corporate national branding requirements. The applicant is here to walk the Planning and Zoning Board through the requested relief, along with the other building and site modifications proposed with the special use permit request.
Thank you, Tracy. As this first part of the presentation is a public hearing, I would request anybody from Mueller or members of the general public who intend to either give testimony or ask questions to please stand and be sworn in by the village attorney. If you think you have any input that you'd like to make, you're not committed to do that, but we do swear everybody in at the same time. So if you raise your right hand, sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
It is?
Okay. You may be seated.
Did you want the Mueller people or all of you?
Everybody.
Everybody. So if you want to be included in the...yeah, that's, you know, it's really easy to do. Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Very good. Thank you so much. Okay. And just in case some of you have not been to one of our meetings before, we follow a pretty strict protocol. At first, I'll turn the floor over to Mueller, and they'll make their presentation. We'll ask a round of questions. At that time, I'll open the floor to the public, and that's be the opportunity for anybody from the public to ask us questions. And please direct your questions to the Planning and Zoning Board. We'll do our best to solicit the proper response from either Mueller or from village staff. Then we'll have another round of discussion amongst us, and then at the end of that, we'll make a motion in the form of a recommendation to the village board as it relates to the special use permit issues. Okay, at this time, I'll turn the floor over to Mueller, and if you could please use the microphone. If you need it, if it's easier to use a handheld, I have a handheld. We do have a handheld up here. If I can figure out how to turn it on.
Good evening. I'm Carl Nowitzki. I'm a general manager of Mueller Honda of Gurnee, representing Mueller Realty. The goal to...for this motion, let's say, and a permit is to improve our current facility. That greatly benefit, A, environment, B, surrounding areas, because the building we're currently in is a little bit outdated, and it will also increase the output of vehicles, as well as increase service department. That will, I think, help everybody. So we're here to...I have Simon, our architect, here with me, as well as our landscape architect as well.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Simon Yu. I'm the architect. Tracy, I thought, did a pretty good presentation of what we were looking for. If you would go to the second page, which I believe would be the survey, and if you see the survey, and I apologize if I'm being a little redundant here, but if you look at the survey, you could see that we have two separate buildings. Currently, one of the building on the right, or on the east, is the new car showroom, and the building on the left is what we use as the certified showroom. And our plan, if you go to the next page, is to...well, that's the landscape plan. I'll ask Ron to talk about that. Our plan is to take the front of the left building off, and the front of the right building off, combine the buildings, increasing the entire square footage by roughly 10,000 square feet. This will actually be the second, I believe, the second one, second Honda in this area that will go through this program. Right now, Honda's going through a national-wide change to reimage their buildings, so that it would catch up to some of the new, modern look, things like that. They used to affectionately call it the soup can, and now they're trying to get rid of that and make it much more of a glass-open kind of thing. The one that's going up right now, I believe, is in Orland Park, and it's a beautiful building. I just visited it just to take a look at how we would approach this building. Generally speaking, we are planning on leaving the lot mostly alone, except for where our building more or less touches. So if you go forward about three or four panels, and I'll start to talk about the architecture, that's...yeah, that's our demo plan, so we'll go one more past that. That's our elevation, and I'll come back to that. I think it'll be easier if we talk through the rendering. One more? No more? Okay, there. Okay, super. Yeah, and as you can see, it's a rather open look compared to what it used to be. We have the classic Honda blue that's being used, and we have these pilasters that are...yeah, and the entire facade is of glass. So because of that, one of the exceptions that we are requesting is the fenestration of the design. And what it says in the code is that windows must be punched in a recess, no less than two inches are projected out from the facade plane to provide depth and shadow. And I think that part we do actually do, because you can see how the windows kind of are punched looking, depending on how you interpret that. But the part that we need is it says it should include prominent sills, lintels, or appropriate forms of framing. So because of the nature of this glass, we don't have any lintels or sills. So that's a pretty straightforward one, I think. Another request that we have is under the roof design. It says roof lines of buildings that are over 100 linear feet, and our building is over 100 linear feet. I believe it's 120. I don't quite recall off the top of my head, but I know it's over 100. Over 100 linear feet and facading must be variegated. Said variegation and roof heights must repeat on center, no more than every 50 linear feet of building frontage with a minimum dimension of two feet for vertical variations. This...the blue on the left kind of wraps around a plinth on the top, and then the blue on the right, and that's a fairly strong identity that Honda wants to try to keep. So because of that, the length, there's no variation. So we'd like to request that. And then, because, again, the way that the standard is that the next one that we'd like to request is the entrance design. It says, "All public buildings must have a public entrance from the sidewalk along the primary building. Frontage in the public entrance must be visually distinctive from the remaining portions of the facade." So for us, where it says Mueller on the left side of the showroom, that's where the entry is. But again, the nature of this design, we don't have anything distinctive about the entry, except for the sign that says Mueller. Yeah, they say that they want to make the cars the stars and not the building. So they try to create the building as a general, lack of better word, a strong identity, but they want it to fade into the background. So..."A pedestrian link to the existing public right-of-way sidewalks and commercial development in order to ensure safe pedestrian access to the commercial development is required." We're requesting a variance from that as well. It's an interesting thing from...I was looking at how we have residents on the east side, I believe we have residents on the west side, then we have some more commercial development, and then car dealerships. And for some reason, along that whole stretch, there doesn't seem to be a lot of connections on sidewalks, and perhaps it's...but along the south side, it appears that they have some sidewalk connections. So I'm not exactly sure what started this, but for us, we'd like to kind of maintain the existing condition of...yeah. Also, the nature of the business, there's very few people that walk or ride their bikes to a car dealership. So because of that, we'd like relief of that. Let's see. One other thing is that we'd like to present the signage at a later date, as a deferred supplemental. The signage will be presented to you at a later time by Honda and not by us. So I'm sure that they will, you know, they'll comply with whatever square footage and things like that, and the height, as well as illumination that you ask for. They're pretty good about that, but we'd ask that. That's deferred supplemental. And Ron will talk about the landscaping.
Good evening. My name is Ron Planka with Heritage Oaks Studio, landscape architects. Mueller Honda asked us to prepare these plans. So if you go to the slide right before this one, the first thing...that's the one. So the first thing we did as landscape architect was come out and inventory the existing plant material that's on site. So we got everything that was on the site, and then we picked out the major plantings that were off-site, especially to the north and the east. Once we did that, we went through the ordinance, figured out what was required, and then saw where we could meet those requirements the best we could. If you go to the next slide, that's the actual landscape plan. So as you can see, there's quite a bit of existing plant material on this site right now. I don't know how many of you have actually been out there, but it's been there a while, and I think it was part of a...the existing landscape was part of a previous landscape plan, and I think that may have been...there may have been conditions set with that, because a lot of that plant material that was on that plan was actually on the adjacent sites to the north and the east. So what we've got to work with here is what's already a pretty good solid screen, at least vertically, at the higher levels from the adjoining sites. So what we tried to do is pick the spots where we could do the understory, which is more shrubs. There are a couple trees proposed on the east property line. The rest of the plantings are shrubs. That'll all reach a height of five or six foot over time. There are evergreen shrubs mixed in, and you can see we tried to do those plantings where we've got gaps. The north side property line is very, very dense, so we've got a couple shrub groupings in there. Brookside Drive, there's a bunch of existing ornamental trees that are already 20 feet tall. So again, we've underplanted those with shrubs, and then the same thing along Grand Avenue. So Grand Avenue, we've added in street trees, and then an underplanting of shrubs, again, to help soften the front of the site and help buffer the view a little bit of the car parking. Towards the middle of the site, there's a large planting island proposed. So in that island, that'll be lawn, it'll be shade trees, and again, ornamental trees. And then there's two new islands proposed to the south of the building front. Those originally were going to be all paved. The paving was backed off. It's now going to be lawn. So we've done what we think we can, especially in the north and the east, to help screen those lots without doing too much damage to what's already there. When people see a tree, they don't realize how much root structure there is and what's actually going on underground with those existing trees. So you don't want to do too much disruption, too much digging, too much root pruning, too much chopping. So we've filled in where we think we can get those shrubs. I think the major variances were those property line plantings, and then parking lot curbs. There was some islands around the site that don't have curbs. They're strictly painted. We've asked for relief from those, and also those plantings. So really, it's a plant quantity relief is where this is mostly landing at this point. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Who'd like to start? Josh?
I can start. Thank you for the proposal. I actually really like the elevation. I think it looks really nice. So just some feedback, just my general thoughts. Have a couple of questions, though, about the pedestrian link, the sidewalks. Can we see the difference between what's there today versus what's proposed in terms of sidewalks?
In terms of sidewalks, there is actually no sidewalks there right now, and we're not proposing to change that condition.
Okay. So the pedestrian right-of-way today is you pull into the parking lot and then walk up to the building?
Right. There is a fairly large patio in the front, and we'll maintain that. We'll have that kind of thing, too.
Okay. Okay. Not sure why. I thought they were sidewalks. Sorry. And then the other one was, are we...this might be for Tracy. Are we including in this approval of the new ground and wall signs?
No.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I think one of the things that we should discuss right off the bat, though, is whether or not we think issuing a special use permit for a use that's been there for 25 years is appropriate. And I personally don't have an issue with the special use concept, so I think we just need to get that on the table first, because that's really the main thrust of the public hearing. Okay.
And I agree with that. I don't think there's any reason that that should be denied. I mean, it's already been there for quite some time. They're not planning on changing the business model. It's really about the building itself, so...yeah.
No, I concur. I didn't have any issues with the special use permit. I actually think it's appropriate.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with the staff on that as well.
All right.
I just have a comment, not an objection, just a comment. In the terms of the door, you know, I always think a door is a welcoming part, but I think you mentioned that you're trying to not have it so...I don't want to put it under what the word is, but showing that it's a door, right? It's just a personal comment. You know, I'm sure your company has done great marketing research, but it's just very different.
Yeah, there's actually two approaches to that. One is if you look at kind of like a Chevy dealership, and you can see that there's a very large entry portal, like a Chevy or a Buick, and you have a Buick in your municipality for sure. And so for that, they show that, you know, you're just going right under the arch. And then the other approach is more like a VW, which you also have, or Hyundai. And for those, they try to make the entry kind of disappear more, so...
No, no, I really don't have any questions. I researched the request quite a bit. I think they're calling...this is called Blue Stage, right, the new concept for it. Initially, I didn't see it on the plan, but after research, I see the arch that they're calling it that's kind of tucked behind the parapet. So, I mean, that looks really good. I don't know if you're doing anything inside to match with the new Blue Stage concepts as well, but I'm happy to see the landscape plan, because when you do join the buildings, you're going to take out that green space that sits right in between them. So you're replacing that with the other two islands that are green...well, actually, three, putting in three new green islands. I'm assuming, right, that's proposed. So I think you're replacing it not entirely, but adequately. So I'm looking forward to seeing it.
And just for clarification, Tracy, they're not requesting any deviations from our...I just lost the word.
Between our code, no.
They're not requesting any variances on the landscaping code?
No.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to just talking a little bit about the design elements that they're requesting, which is going to be separate from the recommendation to the village board, but let's just get the discussion on the table. Does anybody have any questions about the design aspects of it? I personally think it's an attractive-looking building.
Yeah, I like it. I think, you know, before, I think we've mentioned at this board that design element, standard, design standards were to, you know, were to discourage, you know, flat buildings, non-innovative buildings, which this I don't think is that case. There's a lot of thought that goes into the architecture and style of this rebranding from Honda, so I'm okay with the ask.
I think especially, you know, the one part of the design code where the 100-foot long roof is addressed, and looking at the building, I think there's enough, or the drawing, there's enough variation in the architecture across the front of it that I'm not worried about it looking monotonous at all.
Right. No, I think the pillars break that up quite a bit.
Yeah.
And the dividers on the windows. So it doesn't look like a big giant brick wall or anything like that. And we've always looked for open fronts to buildings, and they definitely achieved the...they achieved that.
Keep in mind, the overall spirit of what's behind the design elements in our code is to prevent monotony. I don't think there's any monotony here, so...
And with respect to the entrance, you know, obviously, totally unprepared for the grocery stores. So when you're going to a big store, you want to be able to go, you know, know where the entrance is.
Good point.
Where you have a lot of people going in the building, that generally is not, you know, is not the same with auto dealership. They don't have the intensity of visitors.
Right. Okay. All right. At this time, I'll open the floor to the public. If anybody would like to ask a question or make a comment, if you could please, as I indicated before, use the microphone in the center of the room there. State your name and address for the record. Address your questions to us. Once everybody has had an opportunity to ask a question, I'll close with the floor to the public, and we'll do the best we can to answer the questions. You can sit down.
I'm Jim Lewis, 36149.
Sir, I think you need to get closer to the microphone.
I'm Jim Lewis, 36149, North Edgewater Court. We moved there in 93, so we've been there for 30 years. I've got...I can see that we didn't know what the scope of the work was, so this is maybe dated to you, but I want to go over what we think is relevant to our situation. There are four condos that directly...our backyards directly face Honda, and then the two condos whose front yards face Honda. The...a moment, please. Here it is. Okay. Okay, we spoke about the expansion, just now extending to Brookside Colony property line. My first question was, is it more than one story? My first question was, is it more than one story? The reason why is that, as you know, the medical center, what is four stories, and that's a big burden on their backyards. So it looks like it's one story, just as big as it is. Will the existing parking lot that we see be smaller? And I'm just throwing out these questions right now. Next question was, will the equipment border, you have new equipment, will that border on our sightlines facing the parking lot? I didn't see whether it did or not, but I, from what I just heard, I don't see any problem with that. The noise varies from condo to condo. I do not hear the noise that my neighbor to the west hears. And we tried to figure that out. I think the reason why is that we face the diagonal building, but my neighbor to my right or to my west, I looked myself there, he goes right into the door. Is it possible that in this action, noise can be reduced by some planning? The next thing is, I want to go over the history with, our history with Honda, and it's pretty good. The debris was a big problem. And I think we, one of us complained. And I don't know what equipment they put in, but you still get in our front yards, you know, little Honda receipts or things like that. But generally, it's pretty good. I'm just asking that this be noticed because, you know, we're here now and we can speak to the company. The second thing is, the second thing is the trees. We have a strip of trees that our developer put in early. A lot of those trees were rotting and you can't replace those trees with a trunk right next to the tree. The trunk would go out three or four times and some of the trees were rotting and they had to be destroyed. So my question to Honda is, can we cooperate? The question is, can you, can Honda put more trees in on its property and we contribute to the trees on our property? And I know that's Honda's property, but if you want yourself to see it, come to our neighborhood. It's pretty skimpy and, you know, you can see, you know, it's just a, you know, a large parking lot with, you know, several trunks of trees alternating. This is not full coverage. And so, you know, it's something that we've got to address at some point in time. The next thing is, speaking about Honda's ability to care for its landscape, I assume it's an independent landscaper, but they leave a lot of debris, especially on our side of the thing. And I think it would be appropriate if the city or the village speak to that issue so that Honda could maybe clean up its property. The last thing is, oh, and this other thing. I wanted to let Honda know that we appreciated it when there were so many cars that were having alarms set off at 3:00 in the morning. And they did do something about that. So I think that we all appreciate that. What I'm suggesting is this, if Honda could cite its property with stakes, and I understand that metal stakes are expensive, I, as a homeowner, will pay for one of those metal stakes. That's a permanent stake. And if we could find out what's their property and what is the association's property, and I would appreciate that. Other than that, I don't see anything that is pertinent to the meeting here. If anybody wants to speak later on this, I think if they could contact the board and say, "Look, what can we do to help your sightlines, etc.?" I think that we'd appreciate that.
My name is Carolyn Jacobson. I live at 36131 North Springbrook in the same homeowners' association as Jim. My concern as a board member of the association is a continuing issue that we have. The Honda land extends beyond the berm on the north side of the building significantly, maybe 50 feet. It actually runs up to the corner of our pond. And every time it rains, there's the break, which is required by storm management for the berm that was built around the parking lot, breaks at the point of our, the corner of our pond. And so when it rains heavily and there's a lot of runoff from the parking lot, it causes a mudslide into our pond, which has significantly reduced the depth of the water on one end from the other end. We're concerned with the, I'm concerned with the expansion of the building, that there will be more of the parking lot covered with the structure and that there will be even more water going into our pond. So my question is, we've had our landscapers out looking at it and there's a couple of ways to remediate some of that runoff. One would be a drop box on the Honda land at the top of, the edge of the parking lot. That may be more expensive than maybe they would be interested in doing. But we've also been suggested that if they were to plant a dozen shrubs or something in that path of that water, it would be able to remediate the flow and reduce it so we would get a little less mud. So that would be my concern. I'd be happy to talk to anybody that wants to see the drawing or the plan. Nick, the village, from the Village of Gurnee here, has been out and looked at it. And we, we're not saying that Honda's doing anything wrong at all. We're just hoping that maybe they could do something better to help us. Because when you go back there, their land is right up to the corner of our pond. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
I'm Dan Cohen, live at 36132 North Springbrook Lane, same subdivision as everyone here. So my main concern is the environmental concern. The building looks beautiful. I think we all can agree on that. The problem is, is now it's a bigger footprint. You have more rainwater coming off of that, not being able to soak into the ground, ending up in our pond, ruining our lifestyle and causing us more money at their benefit for what? So I would say I think we need to look into the environmental impact, a lot more of what it's going to do to the subdivision they live around. And so we can all live together because I don't think we want them out, like we're all here to live together. But I think that's our main concern in our subdivision. And then also, lack of cleanliness on the side leading up to the pond. There's always like, there's always a lot of debris coming from the Honda dealership. I get it, they're a business, right? Things are going to happen. I'm not saying that everything needs to stop, but it seems like they don't care at this point. But if they're wanting to work together, let's all work together, basically. So I would want to see more about the environmental impact.
Hi, Brian Malone, 7234 Buchanan Drive. This is for the board itself. Honda's requesting a waiver, I get what she said, the CB2 standard waiver was, so they requesting a waiver, and Honda has been out of compliance since 2016. I guess my question, first question would be, is there a particular reason they were out of compliance for the last eight years? That'd be my first question.
Sir, please ask all your questions and then when we're done with the questions.
Is there a particular reason they've been out of compliance for the last eight years and we're going to allow them to continue to be out of compliance with the standard that the village has? My second question would be, how does the village go about granting waivers for every business that asks to be out of compliance? And does that set a new standard for the village in itself?
Any other questions?
I'm Joyce Churchill. I live at 36134 North Springbrook Lane.
Ma'am, I think you need to get closer to the microphone.
Pardon me?
You need to get closer to the microphone.
36134 North Springbrook, Joyce Churchill. I'm also on the board of Brookside Colony. And I had, I just want to confirm, there's nothing happening on the north side or at the back of the building from a construction standpoint? Because that's where all of our townhomes back up. So I just want to confirm that. I didn't see anything. I haven't heard anything, but it's an important point. And then also to follow up on what Jim said about landscaping. We do mow and take care of our side of the berm, even though it's Honda property. And we don't mind doing that, but we very much appreciate, you know, whatever shrubbery or trees that could be put in there, I think would help from a noise perspective and even a debris perspective and a lot of the issues that we're having as a community. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else? Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the floor to the public. Tracy, I'm going to start with you. Can you restate what led to the non-compliance and what our procedures are?
Yeah, they're not in non-compliance. The issue is that when they were annexed into the village, they were annexed in as a permitted use and car dealerships require a special use. So by law, annexation agreements only have a term of 20 years. That 20 years expired, that annexation agreement expired because of that 20 years was up in 2016. Their legal on that site continued to operate legally, but because they didn't have a special use permit, they were granted the dealership by right through the annexation agreement, the use became legal non-conforming. They were inconformant in terms of they continued to operate the use as our ordinance allows legal non-conforming uses to exist. No different than if you had established, you know, a house on a piece of property and then at some point the zoning had changed and the house was no longer a legal structure. They continued to operate it. Now they, with this new branding and the demolition of portions of the building and the combining of the buildings into one, the buildings have expanded from 32,000 square feet to around 42,000 square feet. That expansion is not allowed under the non-conforming provisions of our code. So they're not non-conforming until they do that expansion, which they haven't done. So they're still conforming to our codes and ordinance in terms of operating as a legal non-conforming use. There was another question regarding, doesn't the granting of these departures for the design standards set a precedent? These design standards, just to remind you, only came into our code in the last probably five, 10 years with the update of the zoning ordinance. They were put in there in an attempt to try to get more attractive buildings. Originally, we had it kind of as a, you know, you have to do this and if you can't do it, you need to process what's called a special use permit to waiver, to waive any of those standards. What we found from experience in enforcing these is that a lot of businesses were having difficulties meeting every aspect of those design standards. And actually, we were finding that it was backfiring in that we were kind of thwarting creative designs to buildings. It didn't have to, architecture doesn't have to repeat every 40 feet on, you know, center for it to be attractive. And so we processed, just in the last year, an amendment to the text of our ordinance to kind of ease the process of getting a departure to these standards because we recognize that they're not the end-all and be-all of great design. And so, you know, the idea behind it is to try to create more attractive buildings, but there's ways of getting an attractive building without meeting each one of these. So it's not really setting a precedent. And I think the, you know, they have presented some rationale for some of the departures and, you know, you can take that into consideration. Some of the questions I think are landscaping-related might be for their landscape architect regarding some of the ability to plant additional trees and/or shrubs.
If you can use the microphone, please.
We can certainly take.
I think maybe before we go into that, could we maybe discuss what the stormwater management issues are?
I don't.
We're talking about staff.
No, 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 I wouldn't do that.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dave Ziegler. I'm the Director of Community Development for the Village of Gurnee. So the original site was designed with the townhomes behind. The stormwater detention met the stormwater standards of the time at the development of the site. I did have our, Nick, our village engineer, has reached out to the engineer for the site to talk about that drainage into the corner, into the detention pond, and they are investigating that. So we're not quite at that level yet where we have all of the infrastructure.
The land, Honda's land actually is a square. It's not.
Right, right. It kind of comes up here, squares off, yep. Yep, but the pond is on your site, but it is on the corner. The net impervious surface is how we measure the environmental impacts, the stormwater runoff. That is not increasing with the new building. You know, they're filling in this area, but they're creating green areas here, creating green areas here, and creating green areas here. So they're not adding any additional impervious surface. They are switching the locations of it. So our engineers have monitored that and, you know, we're sensitive to the runoff for the development. But yes, we are taking a look at the drainage characteristics up here, how it overflows into the site and washes down that bank. So we are in discussions with their engineer.
All right, thank you. And as long as that picture's up there, can, there was a question about what's happening on the north side. Just for clarification, can you show where that new wall is going to go?
Yeah, so the new wall of the building does not extend any further. It's basically connecting these two dots. So it will, you know, basically fill in that gap in between. And Simon, can you talk to the garage openings for the service bays?
Yes.
Whether the noise that's generated out of those service bays existing, projecting to the north, is going to be somewhat mitigated?
Yes, yeah. So since we're connecting the two volumes, it actually cuts down the amount of openings into the shop by roughly a half. So, you know, you're basically taking two shops with two, you know, two ways of in and out to one shop to, you know, the in and outs of that. And also where we're increasing, the amount of openings are to the south or to the bottom side, and that would be more towards a customer and street-facing side.
And there was a question about parking lot size. Is parking lot changed?
Yeah, I'll go over a few of the notes that I have. So in terms of the height, we are. So in terms of the height, we are, we're one story. It looks taller, but it's almost exactly the same. We might be just a little bit taller. We're going from eighteen to twenty feet. So the height is about the same, yeah, not four stories.
But there's only, there's only the ground-level floor, there's not a floor above that.
Right, right. It's one high story.
It's a tall story.
Right. The parking lot size will remain roughly the same. One comment that I wanted to make is that because we're infilling that area, previously that was surface water, you know, when it rains, yes, there is grass there, and yes, that does slow it down a little bit. Behind there is a fairly large lot, and that's more of a sheet drain. And, but because we're infilling that, it goes from the roof and we capture that and put it into the ground, you know, directly into the storm system. Not exactly sure how the system works here, but that's, you know, it goes from the roof and we're not shedding it onto the ground, we're putting it into the storm system. So I think that that hopefully will be a better condition. Yeah, and I think we addressed the noise. And Ron could talk about this, but a majority of our additional landscaping will be along the north and the east. So hopefully that will address some of the things that you've been talking about. Let's see. And the debris and stuff like that and the staking, I can't speak to, I can't address. Was there anything else that I should address?
I think you covered everything.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
I think if you look at the aerial, especially on the east side, we can certainly see if there's opportunities to get some additional plantings in there. If I remember correctly, off of the back of the curb, property line sits roughly ten feet. So there's not a whole lot of, a whole lot of room to plant in there, but we can certainly look at those gaps and see if there's places that we can fill in, if there's a possibility to do that. The reason, again, we went with the shrubs as the, kind of the backbone to the landscape was to preserve what was existing up overhead as a canopy and then to fill underneath those, with those shrubs that'll grow up and, you know, they may not reach the bottom limbs, but it'll start to soften that view into the site. But we can, we can take a look and see if there's opportunities in that space to add some more vertical element.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then there was, there were some comments about survey stakes and who's cutting whose lawn, and frankly, I don't think that's under our purview. I think that's something that some representative from the homeowners association should meet with the management of the dealership and work that out. That seems like neighborly stuff to me. With regards to debris, I would just ask that you make sure you're taking extra care to make sure that things aren't getting blown around. All right, any other questions or comments from members of the Planning and Zoning Board? Yeah, let me look at your question.
No.
Edwin?
I do have one. Our focus on Grand Avenue for foot traffic is on the south side of Grand Avenue, isn't it? I mean, that's in the plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't trying to grab pieces of sidewalk there along the north side, but there's really pretty much nothing there now, I don't think, along the good portion of it.
Because the north side of Grand Avenue is intermittent between unincorporated Lake County and the Village of Gurnee. There's not really continuous Village of Gurnee corporate, or corporate boundaries on the north side. So it's, even if we were to do a hundred percent of ours, it'd still kind of be skipping along the north side of Grand Avenue. So we focused a lot of our effort on pedestrian mobility on the south side.
Right, and it does make more sense in the instance of a shopping center that has stores that people would maybe walk to. You don't walk to a car dealership very often, so.
Right, okay. All right, any other questions or comments? If not, with regard to the public hearing matter and our responsibility to the village board, a motion with regard to the special use permit would be in order.
Motion forward a favorable recommendation to the village board on the petition of Mueller Realty Three LLC for a special use permit to allow the operation of a vehicle dealership with outdoor storage and display on property located at seven thousand Grand Avenue in substantial conformance with the plans submitted with this application.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Could we have, roll call, please.
Campbell?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Path?
Aye.
Pasak?
Aye.
Ware?
Aye.
Sua?
Aye, motion carries. As I mentioned before, we recommend to the village board on the special use aspect, but good luck with the project and thanks for continuing, and thanks for continuing investment in our town. Now with regard to the design standards, do we need any more discussion on that? Then a motion in the formal, in the form of approval would be in order.
Motion to approve the petition of Mueller Realty Three LLC for the requested departures to the C2 design standards for property located at seven thousand Grand Avenue.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Path?
Aye.
Pasak?
Aye.
Ware?
Aye.
Sua?
Aye, motion carries. Again, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is a request from McCullough Kubota Tractors, proposed to be located at seventy-two twenty-five Grand Avenue.
Audrey?
Yes. McCullough Kubota Tractors is looking to purchase the former Anthony Buick GMC Auto Dealership at seventy-two twenty-five Grand Avenue to open a construction and agricultural equipment dealership with outside storage and display. The subject, the subject site is zoned C2 PUD and is part of the Almond Plaza Planned Unit Development. To operate at this location, the petitioner is seeking a special use permit from the PUD use list for a hybrid of equipment rental and leasing service with outside storage, sales, and display use, and truck sales and service use. The proposed business operations include sales, rental, and service of new and used zero-turn mowers, compact and mid-sized tractors, and compact construction equipment. The petitioner intends to use the existing building and parking lots and only make minor modifications such as exterior building paint touch-up, repair and replacement of some light poles and light fixtures, repair trash enclosure, and resurface and restripe of the parking lot. Per the petitioner, the building has adequate capacity to accommodate a significant amount of equipment storage indoors. The types of equipment to be staged outside will vary depending on the inventory. Smaller equipment will be staged under the front building canopy facing Grand Avenue. The first two rows of parking immediately north of the canopy will be used as customer parking. The mid-size and large equipment will be mainly staged in the far north parking lot adjacent to Grand Avenue. The parking spaces located on the east, west, and south sides of the building would be mainly used for employees and customers parking and any possible storage outflow. Deliveries to the site will be made to the designated area immediately south of the building north of Buchanan Drive. The parking lot south of Buchanan Drive will be utilized for temporary staging of equipment such as rental fleet in the event inventory exceeds building capacity. Currently, there are a few gaps in landscaping along the northern portion of Arlington Lane and the south edge of Buchanan Drive. The petitioner has agreed to enhance landscaping in these areas. Kubota also plans to install a new double-faced monument sign on the northeast corner of the property along Grand Avenue. The proposed sign height will be sixteen feet. Almond Plaza PUD allows a maximum height of twenty feet for an auto dealership sign at this location. Since the proposed use differs from an auto dealership, the PUD's signage requirements do not apply. Instead of amending the PUD, Kubota decided to request that the sign be subject to the village sign ordinance. Per code, proposed sign meets all the requirements except the maximum allowable height of twelve feet. So besides the, besides the special use permit request, the petitioner is requesting approval of a minor sign exception that allows an increase in sign height by up to fifty percent of the requirement or eighteen feet. Please note that the Planning and Zoning Board has the final decision-making authority for the request of minor sign exception and can grant it if they find that the proposed signs, numbers, size, design, and placement are consistent with the stated purpose of the sign regulations. Regarding the requested special use permit, the Planning and Zoning Board must make a recommendation and the village board will make the final determination. The applicant is in attendance to answer any questions that the PCB may have.
Thank you. As this is a public hearing, I would request anyone who intends to give testimony or ask questions to please stand and be sworn in. And-
Well, once again, after any doubt, you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Maybe see-
Okay, at this time, I'll turn the floor over to the petitioner. If you could please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record to start, please.
I'm Steve McCullough, McCullough Implement Company. I'm, our dealership is located in Watsika, Illinois, our main dealership. I live in Frankfurt, Illinois. I think the, maybe it'd be appropriate to tell you a little bit about our dealership. I can do that pretty quickly. We were a, I am the third generation, it was started in nineteen forty by my father and my grandfather. I'm third generation, my son has joined the business in twenty seventeen, so he's the fourth generation. We are a very community-minded business. We like to be, participate in the community, support the local clubs and organizations, and we've done that for many years. We started as an agricultural dealership. We are now concentrating with this store, more of a Kubota-only dealership, which will be small ag, really very little ag. It'll be more compact tractors and small tractors used by homeowners and contractors and things like that, as well as the construction equipment and the zero-turn mowers. So that's the focus for product offerings here in Gurnee. If there's any other questions from anybody, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, who'd like to start?
Just one quick question right off, I'm sorry, one quick question off the top. I saw in a note that it indicated equipment and truck sales. Is truck sales a part of your equipment sales?
No, no, I don't know where the truck sales came in. I don't know how that got there. We don't sell trucks. We sell trailers.
Yeah.
We sell trailers, people will buy a tractor and buy a trailer for it. Maybe that was a misinterpretation. We do not sell trucks.
Okay, and in the hours of operation, it just indicated the times, but not the dates. Are you Monday through Sunday? What is that?
Well, at our, currently, we are five days a week, half-days on Saturdays at the Watsika location, and Sundays when the farmers are in the field, which is spring and fall. At all our other locations, it's Friday, five days a week, and Saturday mornings on, when homeowners could be out mowing lawns and things like that, so.
What's your intent?
We're closed on Sundays.
What's your intent here? Is that the same?
Our intent is, would we be open five days a week and probably, depending on what the demand is, I would think we'd be open just half a day on Saturday morning.
I have a quick question. May?
Dane, were you done?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I read the proposal and I think I'm reading correctly, but I just wanted to ask you to confirm, it's just equipment, no agricultural products like fertilizers or anything, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Equipment only, yes.
Edwin?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I like the idea. I'm kind of surprised you chose this location. Aren't most of your sales in more rural areas?
Well, we think this location is ideal for the access to the construction market and the zero-turn mower market also. But we're also here with this location, we're sort of on the edge. So there's homeowners with property that would be buying our tractors, you know, within closed proximity, so. We think actually the Grand Avenue is, it's an ideal location for, because of the traffic count and-
Yeah, it's got a pretty good traffic flow. I had a question about the sign.
Yes.
Do we have other signs on Grand Avenue that are twenty feet? If you could give me some examples?
The former GMC Anthony sign that was on this property was a twenty-foot-tall sign.
Okay.
If you can remember what that one was?
Yeah.
So this one's being proposed four feet shorter than what the Anthony GMC sign was.
It was twenty-four feet?
It was twenty feet.
We're proposing sixteen feet.
They're proposing sixteen.
Well, they're only asking for sixteen.
Yeah, that was a little confusing in the word, yes, sixteen-foot.
Okay, got it. All right, I'm fine then, thank you.
And I think actually the Dodge sign neighboring property, it's actually twenty feet too.
Okay, and this sign will be sixteen feet?
They're asking for sixteen, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Never mind.
All right. Josh?
When you have a customer come, first of all, thank you so much for considering Gurnee. I just want to thank you for doing that.
We're happy to be here.
Yep. When you have customers come to your showroom and they want to see a demonstration, how are those demonstrations performed? Are there any test drives or movements of the vehicles if they want to see it in action?
Yes, yes, I think there'd be plenty of room on that parking lot too for a test drive, yes.
Okay, so those test drives are planning to be done in the front parking lot?
I guess we haven't really identified that. It would probably, my thinking is there's a lot more room on the west side, a lot more room. There's a lot more parking space there than we're going to need for our equipment. So the equipment will be basically towards the street for the new display equipment. So that place on the west, that room on the west would be a spot when there is a demo or a drive, that's where we do it. Oftentimes, we'll deliver to the home also and, you know, deliver there or to the job site.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Todd, did you have anything? Just for a frame of reference, could, can you give us an idea in terms of how large the largest piece of equipment would be?
Let's see, well, the largest tractor that Kubota, we're going to offer the entire Kubota product line.
Okay.
The largest tractor they offer is in their, is an ag tractor, it's two-hundred horse at this point.
Okay.
It would be, I'm going to say, now this is the largest and there's very few of these, it would be probably in the ten-foot-high range, probably ten-foot wide with duals.
Okay.
And twenty-foot front to back, fifteen-foot front to back. That would be the biggest.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Is that something that we're to require a wide load? Wide loads?
If it was hauled that, at twenty-foot wide, but oftentimes, we take the duals off and does not require a wide load.
Okay.
Yeah, Dane?
And then the plan we often talk about, because the south lot, you know, butts up to the residential. So what were the plans for the south lot in terms of the use of the south lot?
The south lot really is not going to have, be a big part of our plans. If we would, I would imagine that if our business gets big enough, we could use that for storage of equipment. But initially, we have really no plans for using that and don't, not really sure that we would anticipate using it.
Okay, and some of the other equipment, they're larger equipment dealers, or, you know, they have some similar to what you're proposing. You know, their properties are fenced in because of, I think, some things you noted in here, right? The equipment is quite valuable and can be mobile.
Yeah.
Are you planning to fence and/or secure the property after hours or what are your thoughts?
Well, I guess we need to keep that open as an option, but I don't imagine we're going to be doing that. We'd rather secure it in other ways, with cabling and alarm systems and things like that. And, you know, we have a, that warehouse in the back is awful large and it's possible that we would, you know, put a lot of excess, there would be equipment we'd move in and out daily. Thank you.
Okay, all right. The, go ahead.
The large piece of equipment that you described, would you be having any of those on display at this facility?
Probably one or two. You know, we'll probably have fifty pieces on display or more, fifty or more probably. But most of them are going to be- or more, fifty or more probably, but most of them are going to be small. Yeah, Kubota does offer that ag tractor. I don't imagine that tractor is going to be in much demand in this area, that size of tractor.
All right, at this time, I'll open the floor to the public. If anyone has a question, I ask you to use the microphone in the center, state your name and address for the record, direct your questions to us, and after all questions have been submitted, we'll close the floor to the public and address them the best that we can.
Chairman Sula, I just wanted to add something for clarification regarding the truck sales. Basically, they, we had to regulate the use based on the use list that was on the PUD, so we couldn't classify this use under like any, like, the two closest ones, one was equipment rental and leasing service with outside storage, sales, or display, that the leasing part was more, the more important component, it didn't have sales, so we actually considered truck sales and service use, so a hybrid of these two uses under the PUD list. Not that they are selling trucks, it's just like the name of the use that we used from that PUD classification use list. That's why we put it in the report. But, yeah, it's just referring to these two uses as like a hybrid of these two uses would be what they are proposing. Hopefully, that clears it.
Because we don't have something that's specifically called?
Yes.
Equipment?
Yes.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense to me, and are you, you good with that, right, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, all right, any questions?
My name is Tony Huestack, and I reside at sixteen forty Newgate Court, which is directly adjacent to the property we're discussing here. And my concerns really are twofold, and they've already been kind of touched on in the other presentations, is the landscaping and the noise. Landscaping initially, when Anthony Buick went in there and Gurnee Dodge and D Wells Goodyear, they did weekly maintenance, landscaping maintenance, and they did that for several years, and, but for the last ten years or so, they haven't done any. So it's a concern if there's going to be anything done with the landscaping that's grown quite a bit, and it's kind of overgrown to this point, and the boundary fence that separates Concord Oaks from the parking lots. And of course, the second thing is noise, is there going to be any mitigation for noise? The fence that kind of splits the property is not much of a sound fence, in fact, it's ready to fall down again, as it has in the past. And, you know, between when Anthony Buick was there and when they had more cars in their south lots, there was a lot more noise because you had car alarms going off constantly and the unloading of trucks for inventory and whatnot. And with Anthony Buick being gone, of course, the sound has gone away quite a bit, and then I, my concern would be, are we going to be back to where we were with loud noises of trucks being, you know, brought in, unloading equipment, and, and if you've got any diesel tractors in here, are they going to be being started up, and are we going to be listening to that? So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Harotunian. I live at seven two two seven Buchanan Drive. I live at Concord Oaks, right across the street from the old dealership. I asked this permit not be given. This business is not good fit across from our houses directly. Our streets will suffer, there will be noise, diesel smoke in the air, and our quality of life and property values will be lowered. I asked you to please be responsible and say no to this permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe not, maybe you could put a, maybe like a RV sales ship there, you know? That would be better than the, this Kubota stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm Kathy Tulio. I live at sixteen thirty Eastern Court. I just want to reiterate the points brought up earlier by the gentleman. My concerns are the landscaping, the fence, which has fallen down in several areas, and the potential noise.
Thank you.
Again, Brian Malone, seven two three four Buchanan Drive. I am the most direct neighbor to the proposed business there is. I can almost touch him with my hand, across the street. Want to add this also for the record, safety engineer as well. My first question, my first question for the board is, how does a business such impact the home values, the home values? Yes, it's commercial, but it's also, it's also industrial. What tax breaks, if any, are the business getting? I moved in in nineteen ninety-seven, I was the very last home built in the subdivision. When I asked the village at that time, all that space was empty, there was no car lots, no credit, you didn't know anything. I asked the village what was going there before I bought the lot. The village said they hadn't decided yet. I happen to know Mr. Antonio when he was on Belvedere and Long Keegan, and I had a, I had a Buick, Buick at the time, was talking to him one day, and he was telling me they were moving to Gurnee. I said, well, I just, and he told me where, I said, I just talked to the village, and they had no idea what was going there. So, but, that ain't the point, I'm just bringing that up because of, from that standpoint there. Also, at the time, they were given a tax break, a tax break for a number of years, which also impacted businesses in Gurnee Mills that moved away. When, when the business, taxes been, fees have been increased in Gurnee Mills, at the same time, Gurnee Mills was built in nineteen ninety, in two thousand, Anthony comes in, they get the tax break, but at the same time, whoever was raising the prices in Gurnee Mills for, for the rent, whoever it was, and taxes. So that was a huge impact on the village as well, on residents as well. Talking about the noise, I happen to measure noise, I do it for a living with precision instruments. I'm, the village, particularly myself, is greatly impacted by the noise at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, of trucks being brought in. I measure air. She talking about diesel, I understand air, and, and the diesel impacting all different vehicles. And I'm going to ask you on behalf of the business owner, have we looked at anywhere else in Gurnee other than that Grand Avenue? He said five days a week, but he quoted seven days a week that are going to be open. We talk about test driving. He said maybe half a day on, on Saturday, then he mentioned Sunday as well. So we're looking at a seven-day business, test-driving vehicles, do we have measurements of noise on those vehicles? Noise radiuses and so on and so forth. Have we, for the village, have we looked at anything like the old Toys R Us area that's not residential or anything in Tri-State Parkway? And as well as, I know it doesn't make any sense, I know it doesn't, but I'm asking the village that as well, or anything in Tri-State Parkway? And finding to the village, what impact does a residence voice say into you allowing that business to take place? At that, as far as the commercial traffic goes, comes in and out of there? The road behind those businesses there is actually private, right? It's not for residents, just so you know, that's a private road. However, coming to Arlington Lane is not a private road. And so that's a huge impact, because trucks have to come in to drop those vehicles off, pick those vehicles up, and so on and so forth. That's a huge impact with kids in the neighborhood, that's a huge impact. It's not, it's not personal vehicle use anymore. So really, those questions I ask and take into consideration, particularly obviously the impact on home values.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Jackie Malone, seven two three four Buchanan Drive. When Anthony was there, this is to the board, they moved out, our neighborhood was left looking like a demolish. We live right across from the car lot. I go out of my way to make sure my home is right there on the corner, it's very beautiful, it's very decorated. When you pass by, you'll see. So we've been there twenty-five-plus years, one homeowner. Please, board, when you make this decision, you don't live on that corner, you don't live behind that south part, you don't live up and down the streets, you don't see the children that walk, and people who walk their dogs. I don't know where you live, sir, but I don't think you would want that tractor place or another place in your neighborhood. I happen to love Gurnee, I've been here a long time, retired veteran. The question for the board, pass by my house, see how beautiful, I take the time to decorate it, and now you want to put tractors across the street from it. This is not your neighborhood, this is our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, my name is Dave Zener. I'm at twenty-one fifty North Dilly's Road, and I just want to say that I think these residents are correct at saying what they are about dealerships. I've been in a dealership all my life, and I live in Gurnee, I've been here thirty-three years. I've never seen a dealership, tractor dealership, in Gurnee before, and I don't know why you'd want to put one next to a residential area. There, if you look anywhere, there's no tractor dealerships close to residential areas, and where they come from, they're surrounded by farm fields. There are no residential people that have those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, close the floor to the public. I'll start off by just a comment about zoning. That property is zoned commercial slash, which includes retail establishments, it's not industrial, and the use that's being requested is not industrial in nature. We don't, we deal with land use here, we don't deal with financial incentives. I'm not aware of anything, Brian, are you?
There is a possibility of that, but, but again, that's not a consideration for the zoning.
Right.
We're just discussing zoning right now.
Right, okay. Mr. McCullough, can you come to the microphone and maybe just talk a little bit about the noise issues?
Well, you know, I, I guess I haven't, I wouldn't know what the measurement is, it could be done, I guess. But this equipment, I guess you've been around little tractors, lawn mowers. It, a lawnmower would probably be the noisiest thing. A lawnmower's running.
Similar to what we'd see at Home Depot or Menards?
Well, they're, they're probably bigger than what you'd find there, but, but I'm saying is, when you turn a lawnmower on with the blades, you probably got as much noise there as you would have out of one of these tractors. It's not like we're pulling these down, working in a field or anything like that with it. So I really don't know exactly what the measurement would be, but that's all I can say. You know, I think, I think a lawnmower running it wide open is, that people would have when they're mowing the lawn, is going to be very, very similar.
Okay, okay. Is the equipment diesel?
Yes, it is diesel.
Okay.
For the most part, yes.
Okay. Audrey, did I miss anything? I mean?
Can, I was just going to say, can you address your hours of operation? I thought you said you were closed on Sunday, but there was some misunderstanding that you were open seven days a week, so if you could just readdress your hours?
We're open seven days a week in Watsika, where we're serving the ag community, and that's only when they, farmers are planting and harvesting. Normal hours at all dealerships are five days a week and Saturday mornings. And in the winter, we even close on Saturday mornings in two of our locations. This will be our fourth location, we have three right now.
Yeah, Dane? Delivery times? When, when does your deliveries come in on site?
Well, yeah, we don't do deliveries in the middle of the night or anything like that. It's, it's during business hours when we have people, staff on hand. I, you know, I would say it's, you know, eight in the morning till four in the afternoon for the, the vast, vast majority.
Okay. All right, back to the Planning and Zoning Board, any follow-up questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
What type of trucks do you use to deliver this equipment?
We're using Ford F-550s, Dodge 3500s, so sort of a medium-sized truck, diesel truck. Now, there will be trucks, we don't own any, but there will be deliveries made on semis from, from factories and stuff like that.
But the trucks that you, or the equipment that you deliver is generally not on a semi?
We don't deliver on semis, no, no. We, it will, it'll be a, a F-550 with maybe a thirty-foot goose-neck trailer, be the biggest loads. And most of the loads are going to be much smaller trailers than that, but that'd be the biggest.
May I ask what would be the typical route for the deliveries? Like, are they coming from Grand Avenue? Do they go to the neighborhood behind the Kubota at all, or?
I would think they would come from Grand Avenue, and is that Arlington?
Yes.
Street, and then Arlington and enter at that point into the dealership?
Buchanan Drive.
Yes, yeah. Well, I don't know about, maybe go down to Buchanan Drive, but there's an entry right there just off of Grand that sort of goes to the front of the dealership. It, I guess we haven't got that routed out yet, but I would think, it could go either way, I guess, potentially. There's two locations, two, two entries to the, to the property, and I guess either one could be used.
I know there were a couple of questions about the landscaping, and maybe can address that here or not, particularly around the?
There, there.
South lot, the fence and the condition of the fence. And I know there's a landscape plan here for additional tree planting?
Yeah.
On the east side of the, of the site, and I don't know if you've taken a look in surveying the site to see the condition of the fence that some of the residents were addressing?
Actually, I was not aware of that, no.
Okay.
We do need to look at that. I mean, if the fence is falling down, we don't want it falling down. We want to have a, you know, good-looking, stable fence.
Okay. You look like you have another question?
I'm not really a question, I'd just like to say that, you know, I, I didn't really have any, I didn't have any really strong reservations against this until he was talking about the lawnmower sound, and if people are going to be test-driving lawnmowers, that's not something that I believe Home Depot or Lowe's or anybody, well, Lowe's is gone, but, but that they allow for test drives, so I'd be a little concerned.
I guess my, my, what I was trying to point out was, the noise of a lawnmower running is going to be about as loud as any of those tractors are. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to be, we have no place to run a lawnmower there, this is all paved. We're not going to be mowing there.
Right.
Other than when we're maintaining?
And you're maintaining.
Property. But that's, that's the only time, really.
So nobody test-drives the mowers like the zero-turn?
Yeah, sure, but, and they'll turn them, they may turn them over off and on, but it's not like it's continual running. I mean, mainly, they're driving, getting, getting a feel of it, how does it operate and handle, you know?
Yeah.
But it, but it's within the confines of the property.
Right, right. I, I do get that. Lot, lot more noise out of a lawnmower than a, than a vehicle like a car, passenger car from, I mean, for most of them anyway. So I guess that would be my only concern. What type of volume do you guys do on sales? What type of volume do you guys do on sales? I mean, is it similar to a car dealership or?
I really don't know what car dealerships do. We would anticipate 25 million to 35 million annually.
Annually.
Okay. All right, and if there's no other discussion, with regard to the special use permit aspect of it, we need a motion in the form of a recommendation to the village board.
Do you have a question?
Okay.
So we're moving forward with the motion?
Mm-hmm. Go, go ahead.
Motion to forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of McCullough Kubota Tractors for special use permit to allow the establishment in operation of a heavy vehicle, excuse me, heavy retail rental and service on property located at 7225 Route 132 in substantial conformance with the plan submitted with this application.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morgan, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Path?
Nay.
Haystack?
Aye.
Ware?
Nay.
Sula?
Aye, motion carries. As I mentioned before, we are recommending body to the village board. And staff will let you know when the village board will be taking this matter under consideration. Next item to cover is the, the minor sign exception for the monument sign to exceed 12 feet. They're requesting 16. And we've, we've talked about what other signs in the area are, so any other discussion on that? A motion in the form of an approval on this particular one would be in order. Go ahead.
Motion to approve the petition of McCullough Kubota Tractors for a sign, a minor sign exception to allow a 16-foot-tall monument sign that exceeds the maximum allowable height of 12 feet on property located at 7225 Route 132.
Second. Did we specify the 16-foot maximum? Okay.
It's in there.
All right, any discussion?
Who seconded, sorry?
Um, I.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, no, if there's no discussion, roll call, please.
Campbell?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Path?
Aye.
Haystack?
Aye.
Ware?
Aye.
Sula?
Aye, motion carries. All right, thank you and good luck. Next meeting on the calendar is scheduled for March 20th, do we have anything?
So as of now, we haven't received any formal requests and the deadline for the public notification for the next meeting is passed, so there will be no public hearing on that meeting. There may be minor exceptions, we don't have anything as of now.
So you don't have anything in the hopper, so, okay. All right, I'll open the floor to the public for anything that was not on this evening's agenda. If not, I'll close the floor to the public. Good job, everyone, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Pat, was that you, Mr. Morgan?
No.
Huh, huh? Oh, that was you?
No, it wasn't me.
No, I said Mr. Morgan.
I second.
Yeah.
I thought you said Mr. Path.
No, no, I said Mr. Morgan, didn't I? I thought it.
Haystack, maybe.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, thanks again.
Okay, who made the motion and who seconded? I always.
Josh made it.
Josh, Josh made the motion and Dean, Sack did.
I always forget to do the.
First?
I just get so.